We did this last year, too.
It's one fifteen. Let's uh we're in a fast pace this afternoon. So we're gonna open the uh was it tabled or was it uh closed?
Uh no, we recessed.
Recession?
Yeah, we're out of we're reconvening from recess.
Okay, it is uh one thirty P M.
Fifteen.
One fifteen P M. Well, this is the uh continuation of the Jugga County annual budget hearings. Uh first up this afternoon is Newberry Township and Kimmy, can you start with the numbers, please?
Uh Newberry Township submitted their twenty twenty's budget with the beginning estimated balance in their general fund of seven hundred and twenty six thousand four twenty nine eighty two. They requested revenue in the amount of six hundred and eighty thousand ninety eight dollars. Budget Commissioner will consider six hundred and eighty four thousand five twenty eighty three. Estimated expenses of nine hundred and fifty two thousand one thirty four fifty leaving an ending balance of four hundred and fifty eight thousand eight sixteen fifteen. In the road and bridge fund, they had a beginning estimated balance of thirty nine thousand twenty six oh one. Requested revenue in the amount of four hundred and three thousand five twelve, which the Budget Commissioner will consider. Estimated expenses of three hundred and five thousand eight eighty three, leaving an ending balance of one hundred and thirty six thousand seven fifty five one. Fire Fund beginning estimated balance of thirty six thousand six ninety eight eighty two. Requesting revenue in the amount of one million three seventy eight one oh five, which the Budget Commissioner will consider. Estimated expenses of one million three ninety three five hundred, leaving the ending balance of twenty one thousand three oh three eighty two. Road Improvement Fund uh beginning estimated balance of two hundred and ninety three thousand nine seventy eight forty six. Requesting revenue in the amount of seven hundred and eight thousand three ninety, which the Budget Commissioner will consider. Estimated expenses of six hundred and thirty six thousand three hundred, leaving an ending balance of three hundred and sixty six thousand sixty eight dollars and forty six cents. They have a debt fund with a beginning estimated cash balance of thirty one thousand eighty eight dollars twenty four cents. Requesting revenue in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, which the Budget Commissioner will consider. Estimated expenses of three hundred and seventy thousand, leaving an ending balance of eleven thousand eighty eight dollars and twenty four cents. Total mileage is one point four inside general, one point six inside road, three point nine outside road, seven point one outside fire for a total of fourteen miles.
You'd like to go first.
Oh, and they do have two reserve funds, a road and a park.
There's no levies on the ballot, correct?
No levies.
Can I ask a quick question? So on the um general fund, you included the transfer out to the reserve fund in the estimated expense.
Right.
But in the road improvement fund, you did not include the transfer out to the service garage reserve. Is that intentional or should those be treated like?
I can't tell from just looking at this, so I don't know.
Normally, it should the transfer out should be considered an expense.
Yeah.
And the transfer in should be considered revenue.
Yeah.
So if that's if that's an error, we'll have to correct our sheet.
Okay, cuz I had a difference of the seventy five K in the ending um for road improvement fund and that's exactly.
Yeah, I I don't know that I checked the ancillary funds. I think I stopped with the general fund for the most part.
Okay.
You did.
It's out. We have the transfer out.
Okay, it's just on this.
No, 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 she's she's about the transfer.
She does. He has to transfer out from the uh road improvement.
Yes.
Not from the road and bridge.
Where did that go?
So we went to the service garage reserve.
And you showed that is increased revenue in that part. Okay, so it should be covered. If it doesn't match, get with them after and she'll we'll figure out where the difference is.
The other page is everything balanced, but this top page, I'm just saying the estimated ending cash balance was seventy five K high because that transfer wasn't taken down. On your sheet. In my budget, it is.
Felicity, can you check that while we're doing our hearings, expect to adjust this? Cuz it'll change the certified revenue.
You follow what I'm saying? So on the lead sheet where you just read through these figures. Instead of estimated expense, six thirty six, three hundred.
Here's seventy five.
It should be an additional seventy five and the estimated ending cash instead of three sixty six oh sixty eight would be two ninety one.
Should be lower, right?
Because there was an additional seventy five K out.
Well, it's not gonna change the certified revenue. It's just gonna change the ending balance.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Certificates will be the same.
It should go within your um.
Yes, it is in my budget.
Yeah, no, and it's shown in our list pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just.
It it is missing from the the seventy five thousand was not added to the expense figure and for ending balance is actually two hundred and ninety one thousand.
That's all I just.
All right, we'll fix that.
Just wanted to make sure that meant anything to you guys.
No, we believe in. We can you can change it on yours. It doesn't change the certificate.
I understand it doesn't change certificate, but we should we should correct there. Or correct there.
We'll have it corrected in a minute.
Yeah.
Um I listen, I thought you did a really excellent job. Um my take was this was outstanding. Um road improvement fund, I thought was very good. The road and bridge fund, I thought was excellent. Um the general fund, I I think things have gotten a little wonky in there. We've estimated ending balances as actual. But it looks you have righted that ship um in in your twenty twenty six budget submission.
Yeah.
I think that's excellent. Um the only thing that's kind of crazy is the fire levy fund. Um but again, that's I know you're still with the building and uh I mean, that's a huge levy. I think when when's that building gonna get paid off?
Well, we are budgeting to pay early on. Let me just go to the.
Was originally a twenty year long.
Was it twenty? I thought it was forty. Maybe I was thinking twenty forty something that it was due to be paid off. Um sorry, bear with me. I don't want to be in a minute.
No, that's okay.
But no, we're 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 hoping to pay it off significantly early. Um we're gonna pay a large chunk this year um over and above. So we're paying we're we're scheduled to pay over six hundred thousand against it um this year, and then we budgeted to pay three hundred thousand against it next year in addition to the regular seventy thousand. Full interest. Um so that should put it.
That's just a that's like operating money you didn't do a lot of at the construction, right? That was a weird thing you did uh like an operating levy and you're just paying. And is that continuing that long?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, forever.
What is the interest now? I mean, what is the yield? What what's the interest rate?
So I don't know off the top of my head, but I know Beth does. The interest on loan. And they're like, it's pretty low.
Yeah, so is there a reason why you wanna pay it off early considering you're getting money?
Three point seven. Well, you were just trying to do do well by the, you know, the residents of the township and not.
Well, but in you.
You know.
We you had talked about pulling back that levy.
Right.
To pay the month. So the sort of they could pay it off in this center that.
Yeah, that was gonna be my point. Like, that levy is for a crazy amount of money.
Yeah.
I get it that it's that there's but I don't normally see a continuing operating levy funding the construction station. So if the trust, hey, I might not be secure that. That comes, but if the trustees don't pull back collection of that, then I'm here.
No, I mean, I.
I'll be both of all.
From our conversation.
Yeah, we've had this in the past years.
The expectation has been once it gets paid off. Obviously, there's an ongoing payment to the fire department for their operating costs, but once the building is paid off. I think that you guys set the expectation. Yeah.
Yeah, cuz historically, they they were, you know, a healthy amount more than that thousand dollars a year.
Well, and I mean, that is gonna be higher. We will have to change the department, but um certainly not the full.
Yeah, but that was my whole point, but you did a really great job. Very, very.
Trying to go next. Let's continue with the fire. Ask two thousand twenty six.
Yes, so we discussed this at the budget meeting and.
Okay, we're all on the same team.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna give you our backstory. So we talked about. I can even show you this, but I created a spreadsheet with a line called the Hitchcock ratio. Because of our discussions with wanting the percentage um to keep, what was it, between twenty five and fifty percent of the of the expense for the year carried over into the next year.
Yeah.
Um and we recognize that the fire fund is has a very low carryover, but really it's what comes in is what goes out. I mean, it's not um we have enough budgeted that we're not concerned that there needs to be more of a carryover there. I don't know if that's your concern, but.
But when you were telling the taxpayer. You're only getting twenty one thousand dollars. No. Have three or five hundred thousand dollars. In that check. In the bank.
No, that's not true. We're gonna transfer it to the um to the debt service and pay down the debt.
Say you're going to.
Yes.
But in two thousand twenty six, you transferred everything away, so you can't make.
No. I'm sorry. Oh, okay, so the payments on the loan are June and December. So we don't actually need that until after the first tax collection in the new year.
What is your first payment on that? Out on the loan.
Orderly.
So it's thirty first. How much?
Fair. So that is a good point. Um I'm trying to remember what we did this year cuz I it was the same as this past year. I don't believe it was an issue. Um.
Yeah, this is clearly Jane.
Yeah.
December.
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember. I think we had gotten the tax distribution.
Probably like we got an advance.
Yeah, yeah.
Starts at. But I think it would.
So we.
You to have this. Two thousand twenty five, you had estimated. That's twenty percent of. Go down two percent. You can't make the payment. Can't do anything.
Okay, I mean, that's fair, too. We could also hold off on the loan payment, pay down at the end of this year with the intention of moving it to the key one of the.
That's that's playing the game. How should you describe the chip number?
No, I appreciate that, but I mean, obviously, we already submitted the numbers. So I would say reacting to what you're saying, we can make that change in our how we the end of this year.
If we look at the general fund cash balance. Of four. Created. It indicated that there was an estimated. Oh, look, there was actually one point one. A factor of six hundred and eleven percent. That is totally taxing. Well, we're gonna have this much money, but in reality, we have six times. So that's sitting in the bank, four percent. That's pretty good. Nice to have. You got a lot of money in the bank. You don't need it. But what are you doing to bring that cash balance down to a?
Well, if I may, I I think Mr. Please pointed out that by the end of budget twenty six, we are right sizing. And I think that from my standpoint, I would chalk it up to my inexperience and getting familiarity with everything. I'm serious because already at the at the six month point, we had an exhaustive review of where we had appropriations that hadn't been spent this year and what were those intended for? And let's put those expenditures through so that we don't have extra carryover that we had planned for. Um so I think again, from my standpoint, I have a firmer grasp on monitoring those figures. Um but I think if your concern is right sizing prior to the next year's budget, then I think what we were gonna say is that we have the ability to move some funds to our reserves, but then obviously if we push that money elsewhere this year, then our next year roll forwards are getting.
You think it's intention? Two K clothes money. Reserves? Pay off help pay off. Fire half or give it back? I would say we'd like to offer reserves that should be doing. Over deep equipment. Forecast for the future happenings besides the. If you have a proposal for that? We had discussed it. We did. Secondly, we we discussed, and this is just recently, reserve fund for a future community. Senator slash town hall, which would be at the over the park. There. So there would be two reserve funds on the road. And I think as much as the money was placed from COVID, and no one's gonna say no to it. It kind of throws you out. They threw the money at you so you were spending money on the general fund. It probably was general fund money. So you got a little heavy there with with that extra money. And we did not. We did not.
Well, and I will say, too, there's other things ongoing that we are funding the the service garage um reserve fund. Um and then also the overall part um that currently is planning for the huge large bathroom, which has been postponed, postponed, but also now the trustees have been talking about trying to put in um people walk course there, um thinking that that would be a nice addition to the community.
Yeah, he says that joke.
No, what do you mean? Your audio? You're out. Oh, I. I'm like, where are you going?
Oh, I.
Are you done, Chris?
I am.
Okay, so we'll we'll no longer look for the nits to pick. Um overall, I think your budget was great. Um you know, your transfer ins and outs balance, that's great. I did observe that your general fund had an increase, as we've talked about, increased cash percentage went from thirty percent carryover to forty eight percent. Your combined road funds, which I lump them all together cuz they're pretty much common use. Did go from thirteen percent to fifty percent. And in talking with Greg over the years, I've come to appreciate roads are probably the most difficult to budget because ro- road projects go crazy uh to the positive and to the negative at a moment's notice without any predictor. And so how do you do that? How do you do that responsibly? I think it fifty percent is not outrageous, although it's higher than we would like to see. I'm not one that I'm gonna go crazy over it.
Can I actually respond to that? So when we had the training with Mr. Hitchcock, he has.
That was training? Were you training him or?
No, he shared with us how he reviews the budgets and that he looks for
Under that.
Between a twenty at at least, correct me if I'm my recollection is wrong, but he looks for a carryover on general um road and fire that pertain to us. There might be other for those that have police and so forth, but um between twenty five and fifty percent. And so when we were going through the budget planning. Like I said, I made this spreadsheet that has the the ratio, so we were tweaking things up and down.
To make that answer work.
Have it work and intentionally went on the conservative side towards fifty percent rather than twenty five because we just wanted to be in the in the reasonable range, but not leaving ourselves, you know, short string.
Okay, yeah, you you you're not you're you sold me. I'm not. Um the fire, I have same concern. I think it's low, but I understand you've got a good, healthy influx of revenue. How you budget that, I think, is your duty and responsibility. Um the the recommendation, my takeaway is I would recommend a a general fund reserve because you have enough funds to do that. And maybe consider other additional road reserves for other purposes. You can do road reserves, so you can actually do project reserving. You can do capital equipment reserving, which I believe you already have done one for a truck. Um but you can also do um retirement reserving. So there are some salary advantages. You have to follow a specific O R C that gives you those abilities, but each of those has has their benefits and it's a way of having money available if you have an anomaly that you weren't expecting. Um overall, though, I think this is it's a good budget. Um you know, just keep doing what you're doing and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Motion, is it?
Yours.
Motion to motion to approve.
Second? Yes.
Yes.
All right. Good job. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um we got some papers for you.
Oh, yeah.
So here's something you may be interested in. It's the ranking of you with other townships of
Yep.
revenue coming in.
Mm hmm.
And then we're gonna have your. Deputy here.
Great. Thank you.
And you'll have a get rate resolution you'll have to pass.
Mm hmm.
Here it is.
Once in a while, you've been doing that. Not long.
Um I just started last year.
So you're already getting senior.
Well, I am a CPA inactive.
He's a treasurer inactive.
I'm just saying my career was.
So just remember, don't use the certificate until you do your tempers. Don't use it this year.
Okay.
This is a normal accounting.
Well.
Yeah, upside down account.
Where's the balance? Um do you need me to? This is to be presented at our next meeting.
Yeah, pass that and then send it back in.
Yep.
If you had a valid issue, you'd get a second one after the ballot. Most importantly is don't use your certificate until.
I laughed at my own.
You're the clerk.
Got it.
Otherwise, you'll get a trouble with. Steak. Thank you. See ya.
Yeah, I laughed at my own notes.
What's not good? Oh, that's the next one.
Not good.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Hello.
All right, Nancy's last year.
Okay. She's retiring.
Wow.
So we're gonna we're gonna open the hearing for Huntsburg Township. Um
You want to go first?
Well, I Kimmy's got another reason. Right out of the gate.
Well, I know that last one took too long. They did a good job.
I know. Kimmy, leave out every other word and do your.
Their twenty twenty six budget with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of fifty thousand three ten thirty five. Estimated revenue in the amount of three hundred and seventy seven thousand seven thirty three forty. The Budget Commissioner will consider three eighty eight seven thirty three sixty seven. Estimated expenses of three hundred and seventeen thousand five ninety ninety, leaving an ending balance of one hundred and twenty one thousand four fifty four oh two. Road and Bridge beginning estimated balance of one hundred and ninety four thousand seven ninety four oh four. Requesting revenue in the amount of seven hundred and seventy seven two ninety five. The Budget Commissioner will consider seven hundred and thirty eight thousand two fifty six. Estimated expenses of eight hundred and fifty three thousand, leaving an ending balance of seventy nine thousand eight fifty oh four. Fire Fund beginning estimated balance of thirty six thousand three eighteen twenty one. Requested revenue in the amount of ten thousand one hundred. Which the Budget Commissioner will consider estimated expenses of forty one thousand nine hundred, leaving an ending balance of four thousand five eighteen twenty one. Village is one point seven inside general, one point three inside road and bridge, seven point five outside road and bridge. For a total of ten point five. Um they do have a replacement uh levy for one point five mils for fire. Uh it's a qualifying levy and it's expected to yield a hundred fifty eight thousand seven thirty seven to begin collection next year.
It's first.
You are.
Go ahead. Um so I found it. I I saw an anomaly in your transfer.
Yeah, I I even.
Did you find it?
Yeah, what it is is same as last year. I I I added the transfer in.
Okay.
So I did. I even I added it in. I actually brought it for you to see that I added it now.
Where's it going?
Um it's going into the permanent improvement fund, the transfer out of the general.
Same as last year, right? Okay, got it. Okay.
Sorry.
And then that's okay. So your general fund cash carryover went from twelve percent to thirty eight percent cuz I left that five K in the general fund cuz I didn't know where it was going.
Okay.
So it'll be down a little bit from that.
Okay.
Um all of the road combined um was sixteen percent last year. It's dropping to ten percent carryover. Um which um is is a challenge cuz it's pretty low. Um fire went from seven to eleven percent, both of which were low, but um the the issue I was gonna point out was you have a qualified levy which you're replacing, which will yield an additional um what's the adder is fifty eight thousand into the fire fund, which will help that carryover. Uh that's a fifty nine percent increase from that levy into total. You only have one levy in there, right?
Yes, that's it. It's the one point five.
So if you could flip to the next slide, please. So here's where you rank in total revenue across the county, a far right hand column. Um you are fifteenth out of sixteenth townships.
Mm hmm.
So you're 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 charging the taxpayers at the very bottom end of the scale.
Mm hmm.
They should be happy about that. Your price, your your revenue per resident is two hundred and sixty seven bucks. The average in the county is four eighty one, so you're half the average, which is it is, except if you're underfunded, that that's where it's.
Right.
That's the symptom. Um next slide, please. I looked at whatever you're levying against.
Okay.
And so in this case, you're dead last. You are the lowest levied fire entity in the county from a township perspective. You're at twenty seven dollars revenue per resident. Um the average is a hundred and seventy three. Now, this doesn't count money that's perhaps in the general fund that people are using, but it's there's an equalizer here somewhere, so you're still at the bottom of the pack. Um which to me justifies a levy of some sort. That's that's your argument.
Mm hmm.
Um but other than that, I didn't see any other issue with the budget.
Yeah, the reason the replacement is on instead of renewal is because the fire contract has not been increased in over ten years. And they have came to us and said they would be increasing it. The current levy will not sustain an increase.
Yeah, I I I would have, I mean, I as as you know, you know, the replacement levy is not well, first of all, next year, nobody can do a replacement levy. That's the legislature.
It will have to be a new.
Yeah, so the other option that could have happened here is similar to what was what happened at Hampden. Which is they can they instead of doing a replacement of a qualified levy, they renewed the qualified portion with an increase. So it's one valid issue. It's not two.
Mm hmm.
And the increase um is slightly less because they don't lose the qualifying factor to the taxpayer. Qualifying, your taxpayers are gonna pay twelve and a half percent more money on that old levy cuz they're gonna lose it forever, and there's no way of getting that back.
Mm hmm.
We typically discourage replacing qualified levies across the board. Uh the legislation has fixed that for us cuz now you can't do it anymore after this this pass, provided the Senate ratifies the overturn of the veto. But uh it is what it is. Um Chris?
My only concern is when you tell taxpayers you're gonna have let's look at the general fund for two thousand twenty four. I'm gonna look at cash. You told taxpayers you would have twenty six thousand dollars that estimated cash value.
Right.
You actually had the ninety four thousand dollars.
Because the road projects didn't come in.
Yes, whatever it is.
Mm hmm.
I believe a uh.
We can do the part.
We can do the park. That was it.
Budget should show something that's a little closer to fact.
Right. Um, we were working on that. Sorry, this is general fund.
Yeah.
So we were working on the park for resurfacing the tennis ball courts, which is also on the cover level. I sent you again because it has not happened yet this year.
Um, I put the nature works grant in and I'm resubmitting to um O D N R for the land and water conservation. I was eleventh in their list and they gave it to the top nine. And she said, file it again. So and it's gonna cost, now it's gonna be rewarding.
About a hundred fifty-five dollars to resurface the tennis court and catapult a ball. There's a whole thing. Well, actually, not just resurface, it's a total.
It's a total good job.
It's a total repair.
That's why you have resources to do that.
So that's why we've been saying we were saving in the general fund for the park.
And we don't have any outside village in the general fund. It's all inside.
Good.
Trying to work within my means.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good.
Uh, who's who's turn?
Seconds, yes.
Yes. Here's the ranking.
Thank you.
And then we have two papers for you.
Yep.
You gotta be careful ranking because you know, there's issues with that, but it gets you close.
Should you go back to the chart?
Yeah.
You know, I should have brought up one. Does this everybody?
No, yeah, it's everybody, but that's.
Should have brought up one. We had Russell in here. Should have considered Newberry. Newberry's got about the same amount of people.
For what, police?
For uh. For everything.
Oh, really?
Right? You know, if you're looking at population. Now, they don't have a police department.
And they're double. See, we don't have a promotion. Thank you. And we have about forty-five percent.
You don't need any. Rate resolution. You'll need to pass that. You don't use your certificate till you start the next year.
Yes.
Thank you.
She's your tiger.
Have a good day.
Okay. I don't know that I got a schedule A. I think uh. No, just a schedule A. It's it's not a big deal. Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing for Middlefield Township. Tammy, can you start with the numbers?
Middlefield Township submitted their twenty twenty-six budget with beginning balance of their general fund. But the government, um, two hundred fifty-two thousand five eleven seventy-two. But a few hundred fifty-four thousand sixty-eight. Estimated expenses of two hundred seventy-seven thousand. Eighty-six thousand six. Road and Bridge, which is a balance of forty percent, seven thousand seven twenty-two forty. Requested revenue of six hundred twenty-seven thousand. Estimated expenses of four hundred sixty-seven thousand fifty-fourty-two eighty-two. Five hundred fifty-seven eight. Ambulance fund. Six, seven, nine, six. Requested revenue, revenue. Estimated expenses. A terrible. I outside. Six outside.
General fund. Extremely well done. Ambulance fund has taken a long time, but it's now in good order. I wish road and bridge were the same, but something tells me you have a project.
Well, yeah, we have Navu Road Project, which was three hundred fifty-four. Thirty-three, and that just completed. And then we have Cloverdale, which is being redone at fifty-seven thousand three hundred. And Peters Road is eighteen thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars two cents. And Hayes Road is thirteen thousand eight sixty-nine eighty.
So. With those capital projects, I would expect your estimated any cash balance to decrease.
Right.
Not nearly double. You had a levy. That's for this year. But you're showing for two thousand twenty-six, you're good estimated cash balance. It just raises a little red flag. Even though you've got all these projects being funded. Sitting.
Well, we have more.
Which also, which should have been in your budget to drive that.
Okay.
I don't get it. Because right now, you have a bean box. That's a ton of money. You've ever had that much ever. Frankly, you go back to fifteen years. Then you go, I know inflation's hit, but it's not. So I would ask you to be attentive to that.
I thought you did a great job. If you press the the road and bridge, I just think. You know, if you look at. So for to be for twenty twenty-five, your estimated beginning balance is five forty-seven, and it was really over a little over a million bucks. So it sounds like you're on track with your estimated expenses this year. Which you thought will leave you with five ninety-five at the end of this year, but considering you were half a million dollars heavy. You're really gonna end up with a million bucks, which is then gonna roll over to next year. So the only thing I would tell you is, I mean, you're in a good position with that, and I know you have pros. I would just get, I would really look at what you have, look at those numbers and get a little more aggressive. Um, maybe do small trivits and and just try to accelerate. So because I know, I know you got roads. So it's not like you're, you know, throw money away.
Right.
You've got to need, you've got the money. Just get a little more aggressive, I think, next year with the projects. And and maybe, you know, you've got budgeted four hundred sixty-seven thousand. You know, you could pump that up eight hundred, no problem, and and maybe work down this this balance a little bit.
Reserve fund.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I I recommend the road and general fund reserve.
We've had a good last thing on there.
We've had a good team.
If you create a reserve fund for road and your fire, you're done. I mean, fire, you 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 have to pay for ambulances, right? You have to put some of that extra money. You've got a hundred fifty-eight percent carryover in your ambulance fund. Stick a little bit of that away because when you go to buy that ambulance, you can draw that from that fund. If you have an emergency and you need that money, put it back in the fund and spend it for its purpose out of the funding it came from. Same with road. If you have plow trucks or, how much are they? Two hundred fifty thousand? Put a little bit of money away so that it's not a big shock. A lot of people now are leasing to buy, but at least you have the initial down payment available. You're not stealing from your projects. That solves your problem short term, and I think long term is fine. So that that's what I would recommend.
Yeah, if you think you're gonna buy a plow truck in the next three years, Chuck's right. Put two hundred fifty K into a reserve fund and, you know, now we're off your back.
Or actually, the next ten years.
Yeah.
Put a little bit, you know, drive it by ten, put twenty-five thousand a year in. You got quarter million when you're done. It doesn't cost you anything when you go to buy it.
I would get that process that.
Okay.
Yeah, we can help you with that. Call, we're, you know, great P A, Chuck.
Tammy and Kristen have some of the paperwork.
Yeah.
Your A P A will work with us.
Well, you got, I think you got to assess, what do you need for, you know, do you have a big road project or do you want to just do something for equipment? Some money away for for.
Here's how you rank with other townships. From a revenue perspective, based on discipline. It's interesting to note, which turn is it through my, a second?
So.
Yes. You you did good though. Just keep doing it. And I just need to, I think the reserves will get you out of spikes and valleys. It'll kind of flatten.
Do we have a copy?
Yeah, we can send you, we'll have it, they'll have it by the end of the meeting today, and they can send it out by email.
Awesome. Thank you.
Send you this time.
Yeah, you'll need to do the rate resolution in the next meeting and then this you won't use until you do your tempers and. Don't use it this year.
Okay.
Control. By state, I'll find you. Thank you very much. Have a good one. Auburn Township. Nah, we're getting there.
Oh, that's just the way it was pointed. Sorry.
Oh.
Do you need anyone here?
You need this?
No.
Come on in. Make this one?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna open the hearing for Auburn Township. Tammy, can you start with the numbers, please?
Auburn Township submitted their twenty twenty-six budget with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of two hundred eighty thousand five sixty-eight thirty, requested revenue in the amount of seven hundred sixty-five thousand four dollars. Budget commission will consider seven hundred sixty-seven thousand one oh three forty-two. Estimated expenses at eight hundred and twenty-five thousand fifty-three dollars, ending balance two hundred thirty thousand six eighteen seventy-two. Road and Bridge, beginning estimated balance of two hundred nine thousand two thirteen thirty-five. Requested revenue in the amount of one million eight eighty-eight one fifty-two, which the budget commission will consider. Estimated expenses of one million eight thirty-nine eight seventy-three, ending cash balance of two hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-five. Fire Fund, beginning estimated balance of four hundred five thousand four fifty-six fifty-four. Requested revenue in the amount of one million three fifty-one one eighty-nine, which the budget commission will consider. Estimated expenses of one million five oh four four twenty-one, leaving an ending balance of two hundred two thousand three forty-four forty-four. Um, they do have some debt. Um, their village is one point four inside general, one point six inside road and bridge. Four point six five outside road and bridge, five point three outside fire for a total of twelve point nine mil, nine five. Uh, renewal is uh one one mil road and bridge. Building two hundred seventy-seven thousand five seventy-three, leaving collection and tax year twenty point six. They do have a reserve fund for a uh single axle dump truck.
Who's gonna first? One of them. Yeah. Okay, so a couple of things, Dan, just for your benefit. I know you use contingency line items. Um, if you, I don't know if you're familiar, the R C limits it to three percent of current expenditures.
I am now.
You're, okay, you fixed it. You found it?
Yeah.
Okay, so those, I I adjusted those in the general fund or in the appropriate fund that you used to contingency in. So we corrected that in your budget. Um, I noticed in your thirty-one oh one debt fund, you're co-mingling a road and a fire um payment, correct? It's, aren't you paying those debts out of the same fund?
Yes, we've been through this last.
Yeah, I think we talked about this last year. Think about this and maybe talk to the auditor of state. Typically, as you get toward the end of that debt schedule, that's gonna get problematic. Because let's say you get all done paying the road component, long-term debt, and let's say you have residual cash. How do you know? How how do you track that? You'd have to go back through every year to see how much came in for that fund. Because they're separate funds. You can't use road for fire. You can't use fire for road. You have to have independent tracking agents. I don't know if you have that. I know what Fred did before you. My worry is the longer this goes, the more history that accumulates, the harder it is to unwind.
Well, I have a spreadsheet that shows.
Where it came from.
Yeah.
And how much was spent. As long as you're tracking it, somebody's going to call. I can't figure that out because I don't have that spreadsheet. So that I just just drawing that to your attention. Your general fund carryover is great, twenty-eight percent. Your combined road is eighteen percent. It's great. Actually, a little low, but great. We know why it was low because you paid back a bazillion dollars to everybody. Uh, fire is at seventeen. It's down from thirty-one. That's good. Still a little low, but you're under a contract, right?
Right.
So you can live with that because you write the check and just don't if you don't have the money. Um, I do recommend additional reserves for you now that you're coming out of that road hurdle. Um, I would suggest that you start setting money aside for like a plow truck or whatever you need. Do that long term so you don't kill your equation when you need to buy it.
We're doing that.
You've got, you've got some, but not for everything. You can actually do your roads the same way. You can reserve your roads, the road paving.
Really?
Mm-hmm. So and I wanna, you know, let you know, I really appreciate the the work we had to do together to remedy this road issue. And I give him credit to Pam and to Chrissy Ryan, who Pam was handling everything with the outsourced agent we used. Chrissy Ryan did the yeoman's work of figuring out, here's what you have to do to here's the steps you have to go through to give that money back. If you go to the next sheet, please. So this is where we stand as of July twentieth, as of uh August eleventh. Um, we are eighty-six percent roughly through um that resolution. There's thirteen percent that are undeliverable, which means we have to, you're gonna get a report. Pam's gonna send you that report.
I saw those names on the list that you sent.
Any anybody?
Well, like Zingorby, who I know because he was my football coach. His wife is still, he passed away from COVID, but his wife is still in the house and still lives there. I'm surprised she wouldn't have got.
Yeah, they did. This is what they tell us, so.
And my neighbor was on the list, and I asked him, I said, how come my wife?
They just may have, they just may have rejected.
He cashed that.
Oh, they were doing this?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, obviously, it didn't come to my house because I know who would have cashed the check. So it's, they're doing, so if you tell us or tell Pam, we know these people are, we'll even send somebody to the house. Because I don't want this to go to unclaimed funds, because then it's a whole nother process for them to.
Well, he got a letter and he's he was in the process of.
Contacting?
Yeah.
And they'll send out another round of letters to all of those.
You're taking care of it. You're handling it. Okay, so we wanted you to see the names, though, for this exact reason. So I appreciate you doing that. Flip to the next one, please. Um, you do have a renewal levy on the balance, so, no, go there. A renewal, you're you're messing with me, aren't you? A a one mil road levy. Um, it is no additional tax, as you know. Um, hopefully, we'll get these things out of sequence so we don't mess up again. Um, but if we go to the next slide, please. Uh, you rank fourth of total revenue per resident. If you look at the far right column of all sixteen townships, you're fourth. Um, flip to the next one. Because you have a road levy on, I'm also monitoring how you're ranking for that revenue stream because it's, it could be a new levy. In your case, it's a renewal. You're currently highest, but I I'm looking at it, and you also had the, I think, the biggest movement to make. Your roads for a while were in bad shape, and you just recently passed one just before this whole anomaly, and you've yet to benefit from that revenue because you're returning back three quarters of a million bucks.
Right.
I think it was seven.
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty. That's exactly three quarters of a million. Yeah, so you're this, you're gonna start catching up to that, but it's gonna take you a couple of years. So that's just for your reference. I copy these for you in case you wanna have them, and you'll, it'll tell you how you stack up with fire as well as the general fund for your benefit. That, other than that, I'm fine with the the budget. Looks good. Did a good job, Dan, and I know you're coming out of the you're you're finally coming out in being able to do things on your own.
He got thrown into the fire.
He did.
He said, good job.
He did.
Yeah, it looks like in two years that our fire department may be wanting to put a levy in because they're chipping away and they're looking at a so we're gonna have to start planning for that.
Chris, Jim? Did I wake you up or?
Uh, well, damn, this is not on you, but back in twenty-four, I look at the cash, you had a million dollars. But you.
But you, uh, township that built the taxpayer, you're only going to have thirty-three thousand dollars left over. At the very least, thirty-one. That's a little. But that's, I ask, I think the trend is for a very good budget and I look forward to not seeing it.
Yeah, the only issue I had was the road and bridge fund, but there's, I think it's been talked about, that you had an extremely unique situation in there, so. Thank, well, uh, at least I'll give you a pass, a little bit on that, so.
You're actually, you're actually giving his predecessor a pass.
Yeah. Yeah, but you, uh, then I don't want to give the pass, no. Um, but no, you, you've been doing a great job. I'm, I'm very encouraged. So.
Thank you. Uh, whose turn is it?
Yours.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Yes.
Yep. Aye.
Sorry, wasn't on top of it.
Great, that's a good one.
You'll need to pass that. Um, you'll get, you may get two of those, Dan. You'll pass it in your next meeting and then if your renewal passes, you'll get another one to do.
Okay.
Because we can't forget whether it'll pass or not. We don't want to wait. And this is your certificate. Yeah, you can, all the slides.
Not that one.
The one before. We'll push out the whole slide presentation to you after the meetings. That's okay.
Yeah.
Here's your certificate. You'll use that starting with your tempers at the end of the year. Don't use it before that. If you use it, you'll be wrong in your end of year. Okay, so just put it away until then. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Now we get the hardest one coming up next. Jugga trouble solid waste. Gee, this, this, you're, I hate this. This is terrible. Just like the thirty-second review.
Well, it's keeping up there in seconds. We want to time you.
We're on a short leash today, so, um, we're going to, you okay?
Yeah.
We're going to open the hearing for Jugga trouble solid waste district. Tammy, would you? There's your copy. Tammy, would you start with the numbers?
Jugga trouble solid waste submitted their twenty twenty-six budget with the beginning estimated balance in their general fund of two million eight forty-seven six seventy ninety-eight. They requested revenue in the amount of two million ninety thousand dollars, which the budget commission will consider. Estimated expenses of two million nine eighty-six thirty-two and an ending balance of one million nine fifty-one six thirty-eight ninety-eight. Now, they have no millage and nothing on the ballot.
The only, um, first of all, when you're predecessor this year, I mean, these did not go well. You did such a great job. I think we always tell you, you, you have done such a wonderful job with this. Um, and uh, I had, I used the facility, you know, out on merit. Um, I mean, what a, what a great resource for the county. And I, the only issue I have with that is I just don't think enough people know about it. Uh, really, I mean.
We're going to be sending out another set of postcards. The last time we sent out postcards, it increased our traffic threefold.
Oh, okay.
Um, I will tell you that the traffic at Jugga matches the traffic at Trumbull and you have half the population. Just take, just saying.
Twice the trash though. Twice the garbage.
Just like, we're doing good.
You have to have trash to recycle.
Yeah, and the, the people working there were wonderful. I mean, it was just such a great, as a, as a taxpayer and a user, what a, what a great experience. Um, yeah, and the only thing I could say is, you know, you're kind of creeping up where your cash balance is kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's up there.
We're spending, yeah.
Yeah, but so I just wrote on, wrote like, hey, more grants, more services, but.
Oh, you mean we're, our cash balance is a little high?
Yeah, well, no, I mean, it's, it's healthy.
We've been bringing it down pretty significantly. When I came in, it was at seven million.
Rhino, that's when we had the bad meetings.
Yeah, so we are, we are spinning it down and there are a number of new programs if you're interested in the new programs we're starting next year. Um, there are some, you know, we're, we're looking at, we're going to offer some new grants for illegal dump cleanups. We're going to hopefully start some business recycling programs. Hopefully a maple syrup tubing recycling program in Jugga County for all of our maple syrup.
Tubers?
It's polypropylene. It's, it's a, it's just a weird plastic, so we have to do something special with it. It'll relatively cheap to do, but we're hoping to get it off the ground. So we're, but our biggest push for next year is to try and get more curbside recycled, which curbside is when they come to your house in the little cart versus having to drag it all to a drop-off site. Because drop-off sites is, you don't see our, our line item budget, but the drop-off sites are now approaching a billion dollars a year. Well, that's the largest, by far the largest line item in our budget. It's almost a million dollars in the, in twenty. We're anticipating it to be almost a million dollars in twenty twenty-six. The only way to reduce that is to get more people to do curbside. Then they won't use our drop-off sites so much, so the usage will go down, which means our bill will go down. So we're going to look at hiring consultants to hopefully get some programs off the ground to encourage and or come up with ideas to get more people to do side recycling.
Yeah, that Russell side, so.
Chester's the biggest. Chester, Chesterland by far. It's the biggest in, in my system. About forty-four sites, Chester by far my busiest.
You're joining a lot from county to county.
Probably, because there's so, it's.
Russell, we watch the license, all the licenses. Most of the licenses are coming from.
Chester, uh, yeah, Russell is very busy. They're one of my.
Yeah, I was going to say that. I feel like we are.
But we do. Uh, uh, Charvin does too as well because people come in to go to the shops at Charvin and we get some.
They go to the shops at Russell too.
Sure, sure.
Shop.
Yeah.
Circle K. Circle K's. Pizza.
A great job, really. Wonderful, wonderful job.
Okay, um, who's?
Chris. Second, yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Nice seeing you.
Good seeing you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the last hearing of the afternoon. Um, this is the Jugga County hearing. Tammy, you start with the numbers.
Wow.
Good afternoon.
Jugga County submitted their twenty twenty-six budget with a beginning estimated balance in their general fund of six million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand six nine. Uh, they submitted uh, estimated revenue in the forty-seven thousand six seventy-three one twenty. Budget commission will consider forty-seven thousand seven thirteen four twenty-six. Also have estimated transfers in as a hundred thousand. Leaving a twenty-five fifty-four dollar four forty-two, four eighty-two, four six two fifty-five. And then estimated expenses of fifty million six thirty-five two fifty-eight. Ending balance is three hundred forty-seven two four. Two point five inside general, two point five outside road, one point two outside children's services. Outside senior citizens and two. But have two. Yeah, elaborate.
Is it, is this four millage?
Yes.
Not suppressed, no. And which one was suppressed?
Uh.
Showed your service insurance completely or?
No, just a million.
Only doubt. What, what did that convert to?
I don't remember.
What's, what's going on?
Which, I think it was.
It's going to be. Yeah.
Was the two?
No.
Two thousand fifteen.
Yes.
It was that, it was nine.
It was a point five total. Suppressed.
Okay. So you're not reflecting any of that in here. You're reflecting four millage.
Yes.
Okay, who's going to start?
Did you want to start?
Are you looking at me or?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adrian, the eight years I've been here, I spent the first fully funded budget in the eight years I've been here. I mean, I, maybe.
Probably, probably now.
Maybe ever. I don't know.
It could be.
So. So I'm going to give all the credit to Carolyn Brinkie because she's the only person that's new. Right?
Yeah. I got here just after the fire.
Eighteen hundreds? Um, the general fund, you have a seven point, roughly seven point six percent carryover. Um, you know, I I'm, what I'm amazed at is we've fully funded and we have almost four million in carryover, which five years ago, let's go back, eight years ago, remember when Dave Lair was here? It was impossible. Couldn't happen. We, we had zero for carryover and we couldn't fully fund. So remarkable change. I mean, that's what I mean by, and they said it couldn't be done because I remember writing a nasty gram to Dave Lair, being told this is an academic exercise because these numbers don't match. And he told me, you don't understand finance. Well, you did it. I don't know how you did it. It changed how finance was done, but. Um, my worry is, and this is my opinion only, and I have expressed this to a number of people, I think, you know, the music is going to stop at some point. And we need to make sure we got enough chairs because we are spending money like drunken sailors. Not, not, I'm not directing this at you.
Yeah, yeah.
We as a, as a county are spending money on drunken sailors and the pipeline is becoming choked. Residents cannot afford any more money. So we've got to do things better. We've got, we've got to do it better, faster and cheaper or we're going to find ourselves upside down, which we're going to flip the scenario. And I know Chris has been an advocate of, we've got a lot of cash and we're, which we are, we have a very wealthy county, we're very fortunate, but that can change as fast as it came around this time and I don't want to be that person. So I'm just identifying some, what I consider huge ticket items that are on the horizon. First, we have to finish the current courthouse renovation. And then we got phase two. Now, we were debating, you know, over the past months, how much does phase two cost? You know, let's just say conservatively, it's a three to five million dollar, you know, remodel. I don't see much happening that way when that starts. Usually it starts at three to five, ends up ten to twelve, and then it, it goes much.
Like a safety center roof.
Well, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my worry is we have this creep scenario occurring. In the, in my business, we call it restoration creep. Coming for a oil change, you end up restoring the car and it goes from twenty-five dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand. It's, that's what happens.
Yeah, but you have a eighteen.
That's, that's a dilemma.
What happens.
And, and then we, and then we've got the Jugga County office building expansion project for parking. I'm going to address that with the commissioners tomorrow, but I think we owe it to ourselves to find ways of saving money without changing features, functions and quality for our taxpayers. We just, we're in the habit of throwing money at things and that is, that ship has sailed, in my opinion. Um, maybe there's some money hidden somewhere that I'm not aware of. Safety center roof, I mean, I watched it. We went from a million dollars five years ago to three and a half million dollars and who knows where it'll end. Um, and their parking lot is no better. I mean, you go from a couple of potholes to we got to redo the whole thing.
Yeah, that's almost a million dollars now too.
Yeah, you must be not sleeping at night because you're adding up these millions going, there's.
Yeah.
Not enough. Courthouse antics basement conference room. I mean, that's mushroom climbing and, and we know that. Um, the brickwork in the back of the building, fiscal renovations, prosecution project, all these things start adding to the picture. And again, I'm just afraid that we are going to get ourselves in trouble if we're not prudent with money. And I, I know the tendency of a lot of us, when COVID hit, we got eighteen million dollars of free money. We spent every nickel of that and then some, and we're still in that mentality and that, that, that stopped. So I'm just putting out my fear that the economy is not, the tax economy is very different today than it was just a few years ago. People are less willing to give away more money for government because.
Then anytime that petition could reach the number of signatures that it needs to go on the ballot.
You know, that, that petition has gotten a lot of traction. I mean, they are camping out outside of treasuries across the state. People come out from paying their taxes and these old people are signing this, like, I'm done. It's, it's a real, it's a real problem and we can talk around it, but I'd rather look at it head on and be prepared. So, you know, that's my takeaway. Um, you do have one lit, and we've identified everything in blue that are, that are levies on the ballot. You have your renewal that's on the ballot. Is that the one that was suppressed prior? No, the other ones. So this is the non-qualified. Oh, this is the qualified. It's the qualified. Okay. But that's no, no additional new tax for taxpayers, which our mantra here for budget commission this season has been, anybody who puts additional tax on, we are, we are squeezing them as hard as we can. Are you sure you want to do this? Because not, that's not what the taxpayers are saying they want. Now, whether they vote that way or not, it's not up to us, but our job is to call the attention to it.
Is Columbus going to be overriding the um, governor's veto on that?
So the House has overridden the ability to put replacement levies on the ballot. Um, the Senate has not yet voted.
Okay.
The House is holding the vote on the other two initiatives for when they come back in September. I have, I've been told by House representatives, they, they're intending to do it. I've been told by senators that they have the votes. Till they do it though.
Yeah, yeah.
It means nothing. And I, and I don't need any of our futures in the folks in Columbus, quite frankly. There are some nice people down there, but not a lot happens.
Chuck's point, we had a very strong conversation with the Russell Township trustees.
Good.
I'm there, Leslie.
As a Russell resident, yeah.
Go back and watch that.
I was urging you to be. I'm, I'm also kind of disappointed that acquiring the chase. I was, I'm going to be willing to make a, I'll purchase the building myself and turn it around and I'll gift it to the county.
Well, I'm, I'm going to give something to the county today too, very similar to what you're going to do.
I think they're going to do that tomorrow.
No, I'm going to do it too.
Okay. Okay. I still would very much like to acquire that building. It provides parking. I know, uh, Jim is scared to death of the building and the liability therein. So chuck it down.
It's, yeah, there's a lot of old things inside that building.
I don't want that building at all, Chris, I'm sorry.
I used to play there when I was a kid.
Yeah, he just imagines the treasurer's office in that bottom floor.
It was a lot bigger than you played there.
Yeah. Soon as you go across the street. Okay. I have nothing further.
Um, yeah, I think I, I made, you know, when you did invited us to the um, public hearing on the tax budget, I, I, I think I made my comments there and I'll, I'll reiterate those. I, I thought this year was um, the, the most transparent. Um, and really, I just thought you did a great job. You, you took, you actually listened to our feedback, which a lot of people don't like our feedback. Um, and I, and I look at what you did here and again, we both know that, we, we all know the cash balance is going to be more, but at least you took a educated stab at something that you can look people in a straight face and say, hey, this is how I got to this number. Um, and I think we talked about this. I mean, with, with the extra unspent money, it, it might just be something we're chasing that we're never going to catch because, you know, we talked about, you know, may, maybe you could start budgeting the unemployment and the workers' comp stuff differently, so it's not built in. Maybe we could, we could save some money on budgeting there. Um, but, you know, throughout the county, when you look at the payroll, just vacancies and positions and, and just regular turnover, you know, I think that's accounting for a lot of this, this revenue, you know, carryover on the, on the salary line items.
It's about four to eight million dollars every year that goes unused as far as appropriations and that directly affects the unappropriated balance, which becomes my beginning cash balance. And then if you factor in another four to eight million in the, the next year, you're talking about eight to twelve million dollars. And if you go back and you look at the, the delta between my estimated cash balance and the actual, you're going to see that, you know, eight to twelve million every year. So I, I, I am looking at the possibility of, uh, and you had mentioned it too during your budget hearing, looking at uh, some different budgeting software from ClearGov. Maybe there are some options there that we could look at to dial in this budgeting a little bit more to where we have more options as far as what we can put in there and, and what people are able to budget versus what their actuals are. So, and, and try and uh, figure out a way to come those, those two things closer together.
So one thing I'm doing internally is we are, I'm working with Frank and Pam on this. We are considering going to a either a quarterly or semi-annual budget, um, rather than a annual budget internally. Because the tendency is when you get money, an influx at the beginning of the year, you allocate. You, you blow it up. And we all know what happens. You get to the end of the year and you either run out of money or you got it misappropriated. So if you do things in a more quarterly basis, I think you stay better in tune with your expenses and you start, and it forces you to be cautious, right? Because you're limiting it to a quarter's view. Who can predict eight months out of what the expense is going to be? These quotes you haven't even gotten yet.
Right.
Yet you budgeted and you've gotten the money. So we're going to have to play with that. I'd like to do that through an automated system though, rather than through hard math. And that, and I know Open Gov has, ClearGov has.
Yeah. Yeah, if you're willing to, um, because I can have him come in and do a presentation to the budget commission and uh, take a look at what they have to offer if you would like to see that.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about this too though. The one thing I have always appreciated is someone who has a budget and manages a budget is, I don't feel like the county has ever punished people for not spending, you know, so yeah, there's this big chunk of money that's rolling over. But you don't want to, there's a lot of government, in fact, most government entities, I mean, you know, it, they're then. It, there then, I think of the, the classic, the office, and then I'm a good fan of the office. Someone was trying to explain to Michael, like, hey, if, if your parents give you twenty dollars to run the lemonade stand and you only spend, you know, eighteen, they're only gonna give you eighteen dollars next year, so we need to find something to do with the two dollars, right? And I've never, I have never, as somebody who manages a, a budget under the umbrella of the county, I've never felt that. I've never felt like, oh my gosh, we gotta spend this money, right? I know that if something happens, or maybe I don't fill a position for eight months and I have to turn over a hundred thousand dollars in salary, I, I have never been, you know.
You're not, you're not one of the ones that's in yellow, red, or pink.
I'm not.
No, you're, okay. So I, I did this.
I don't, I don't wanna know who's in yellow.
Well, the auditor's office is not, so, um, but, so I did this, and everything that's in yellow um, leaves at least ten percent of their budget in appropriations unspent. The red is, um, over twenty percent, and the pink is, um, more than thirty percent unspent in their budgets. So, um, the, the two worst, unfortunately, are, um, our departments under the Commissioner's Hiring Authority, which we're gonna work with them, building and maintenance. So maintenance, just because.
White walls are out, and you're telling me those.
Let's, let's not ruin the meeting.
Yeah, so, so, but, but they are, when you break it down into numbers, it is about four to, to seven, eight million dollars that go unspent. Last year, obviously, was really high, fifteen point seven million, but ten of that was the ARPA money. So that five point seven is still, you know, cooked into the number. So, um, finding some way to do this is gonna make budgeting a lot more transparent and honest. And, uh, we can use the money for things that are important, like facilities and stuff like that, so.
So before we vote, um, I've been watching the commissioners' meetings. I know you guys have been consternating over, you know, the plaque for the new courthouse, and, and so in the spirit of that, I thought it would be very important for us, the Budget Commission as a whole, to, to, um, offer some, some help and some, you know, some ability to navigate your way out of that dilemma you're in. And I know Commissioner Braking, your, your concern was, your, your concern was, you know, can we size this thing so it's not so big? And can we get temper this issue? I know, uh, Commissioner DeWarx's concern was, you know, tradition. Traditionally, we always have this bronze monument, and Commissioner Spillary was concerned with, you know, his name shouldn't be on there, that another commissioner's name should be on there. So they wanted this editing ability, I guess, to say the least. So what I did at my own expense is I satisfied the plaque problem with this custom-made, well, made in China.
Dry erase.
Dry erase board with different color pens and one for former Commissioner Lennon to use as well. And you can put your names on here and then you can just erase them. You can make it traditional, and you can put this anywhere, and it's magnetic. So you could do post-it notes on here. So I'd like to present this to you from the Budget Commission.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Well, I, I think we are not gonna do anything about the plaque if it makes you feel any better, so.
Yes, you are. That's gonna really upset Jim DeWarx, I'm just telling you.
How long will it take for the plaque to appear?
Oh, that's.
It's a job order. You're gonna have subcommittee assignments, committee assignments.
Christmas. Yeah, you can use a command script.
And you can do, I can actually get, I'll be going to go up to four of those. You can put one at every entrance if you wish.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Did you get a raise or something?
You're in for one. He's in for one. I'll buy two. Thirty bucks on Amazon.
Okay, we'll move to the group.
I'll say it.
Hi, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
You too.
So I'm sorry, that was the least painful Juggernaut County budget review in twenty-two years.
You're sorry?
Normally, you know, it requires a lot of personal gray hair making. That stuff.
Well, I'm not sorry. I.
Are you done?
Until tomorrow.
Other stuff.
Don't call me. What happened if I have a good clip?
Thank you.
See ya. Here, what do you want? No, that's. No, I'm fine.
That didn't all go well.
They didn't find it as funny as you did.
I've been laughing for two days since I ordered.
It doesn't take a lot.
It's as good as when I got him his, uh, his coat hook for his Jeep, cause he didn't have a coat hook in the Jeep, and I got him some sparkly one that his dog loves.
I thought that bought my Jeep.
Didn't have a coat hook, I know.
I remember that.
You didn't have a coat hook.
So I bought him one on Amazon, gave it to him.
Bedazzled. And he bought it for me as a joke, but I, I don't have a coat hook, and I'm not gonna buy one, so I use it. It's in there. It's black, but it's like, uh, sparkly, it's sparkly, yeah.
What stands up?
Yeah, next time you're out there.
Carol, how long have you been watching online?
This, the Budget Commission?
Yeah.
I don't usually watch a lot, to be honest. I don't, but I know our members do. They're, they're.
It really was the easiest.
No, I've read all the reports.
A year.
Definitely, I could pick up on that, so.
She has all the A G T ones for us.
Yeah. I was expecting much longer meetings.
I'll do this.
Okay, so I'll give it.
What do we have, the minutes?
Uh, minutes from August fourth, a regular meeting.
Awesome.
Second, yes.
Yeah.
Um, Berkshire Local Schools Amendment Number Two. Um, they had, uh, net adjustments in their special revenue fund of fifty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight uh, nine cents in capital project adjustments. Uh, new special revenue fund total is four million, four twenty-five, five thirty-six, thirty-five. New capital project fund total is seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, six twenty-four, fifty-nine. Three seventy-eight, five, two.
Um, second, yes.
Yes.
Township, uh, number six, they had. Project fund. Capital. Five million. Thirty-one, seven seventy-three, fifty-one.
So, second, yes. I make a motion that we recess, uh, until nine AM tomorrow.
All public comments, Brad.
Any public comment?
I think we usually ask for the.
A number of people have asked for the PowerPoints. If you could forward those to.
You don't post those, I think.
We will, they'll be on, uh.
Oh.
They will be posted. When will those be? Somebody was asking especially about, wanted to see the Newberry hearing. Well, Dan wanted to, um, the, Ann Wisher, she wanted to see the, she, she wasn't able to stay.
They also get those, Braking.
You gonna, want a copy of them?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I, I thought I handed some out earlier.
Sarah.
Sarah.
Here's, those will publish as well, but you'll have them in advance.
Um, I'll give it to you in the afternoon.
Any other questions, comments?
Anybody online?
Anybody? Okay, I move we recess, uh, the budget hearings until nine AM tomorrow morning.
Second?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everybody.